All right, it's a couple of minutes past the hour, so I think that we can get started. I see that there's still people coming in, but they will catch up. Good morning, good day, good afternoon to everyone, wherever you are. For those who don't know me, my name is Eero Leefter, and I work for ABB Marine and Ports. And within the Cimac community, I'm in the Cimac Board, the VP of Digitalization, and also responsible for the Cimac relationship to IMO. With me today, I have Leo, and Leo will introduce himself a little bit later. Usually, these town hall meetings are opened by Daniel Edman, but sadly, he's a little bit under the weather, and then we wish him speedy recovery. And then he will for sure be with us later on. The topic of today, the town hall, is the understanding of IMO and what we're doing in IMO. And we will get to all of this in detail. Next slide, please, Leo. We will generally talk about the IMO, which I will walk you through, and then the rest will be managed. Also going forward, I think that we would also welcome any suggestions for future town halls on what you would like us to talk about. Next slide, please. So, the IMO, next again. Why do we talk about IMO? Kind of new is that, as you know, Cimac was founded in 1953, but after that, we were not very active with IMO, but we started to talk about the role of IMO and the possible role of IMO and Cimac. And we made the decision a couple of years back to apply for a consultative status, to become an NGO in IMO. That was granted by the Council in July 24. And last year at the IMO Assembly, it was then finally formalized with full membership as an NGO in IMO. Why IMO? I think that for most people that work with the maritime industry, they know why IMO is important. It's a specialized UN agency headquartered in London. And it's the highest regulator, the highest authority for maritime regulations for commercial shipping. It sets standards for safety, security, and environmental performance. And it creates the regulatory framework. Now, we need to remember that also one important task that is slightly missing from the IMO work is that it works with regulations for commercial shipping in international waters. Some topics that we will not always remember is that ports are in member states and then every sovereign government and country makes their own decisions who is allowed to enter their ports and to work in those port areas. This is something that will become quite clear when we start to discuss sometimes in the future, for instance, like the questions of nuclear. Next slide, Leo, please. Not every country in the world is a member. There's, depending on how you calculate, but roughly 200 countries, sovereign states in the world. Of them, 173 members are members of IMO. We have a number of NGOs, one of them is Cimac. We have others that are specialized in the same areas that we are. But it's a wide variety of interest groups that are as NGOs in Cimac with the main purpose to give counsel to IMO in various topics. We also do have intergovernmental organizations, IGOs. One good example is the European Commission, that EC is an IGO. And a little bit, why this is relevant is that NGOs and IGOs have a consultative status. So their purpose is to give support to IMO. But only member states are capable of making decisions, but also starting work programs for new legislation. Next slide, please. The IMO is structured in its external work in committees and subcommittees and intercessional working groups, working groups, and so on. The formally, it's the five main committees, MSC, MEPC, FAL, LEG, and TCC. Whereas depending a little bit on who you ask, MSC is focused on safety and MEPC on environment. And then those are seen to be the main committees and the most important committees, which then have other than subcommittees that are specialized in certain areas. We were with a group from us at the SDC, which was the first meeting, SDC 12, which was the first meeting of the year, a week back. And we're going to have a number of meetings coming forward that are going to come this year. Leo is going to be making a little bit more deep dive into what we are going to work with and which ones we are engaged in. And here, I would like to remind everyone that a little bit on Leo's role, which is to facilitate and help and help us navigate through IMO and the IMO works. But the main work, the purpose, the subject matter specialists and the content production is in the Cimac working groups. So any of the topics that are coming up are coming from our working groups that seem to be relevant for us on how to go forward. And we go a little bit more into detail there too slightly later on. Next slide, please. So how the regulatory process in IMO works is on paper, simple. Here again, I would remind everyone that a proposal to the work program has to come from a member state. That doesn't mean that we cannot initiate the discussion with any of the flag states to support us going forward. But then starts the process that ends up in, at some stage, entering into force. A lot of discussion, a lot of questions that we get is how quick is this process? I wouldn't use the word quick in this setup, but we do have some areas that have taken 15 to 18 years to go from proposal to entry into force. Some areas are going faster, but in average, we could say that it's minimum three years before a work program proposal can become an accepted and adopted regulation that will enter into force. In all of these stages, from the work program proposal, we as an NGO have the possibility to be part of the process in committee work, in subcommittee work, and in the drafting of the proposals and then give input and then also comments and be part of the revision of how these regulations will come up. Next slide, please. And again, I would say that if this is all old news for you, then I apologize for going through this in a repetitive way. But if not, I hope that this gives you some more information on how IMO works. We have access, and we all have access as an NGO, to information of the ongoing works in IMO. IMO has a website, and within that website, we have the web account for IMO docs. And you can apply from the secretary for access to the documentation. Or if you're looking for some documentation, ask Leo to help on how to find these materials that we are looking at. And especially when we are preparing to participate in a meeting, it's important to go through the agenda, the submissions, and the comments that are published beforehand in order to be able to prepare ourselves for the meeting itself. Next slide, please. And in order to follow up what's going on, IMO publishes a meeting calendar for the year. This is also available from our website, and if you need detailed information from Leo. And every meeting has also its daily schedule. As a reminder, we still have to remember that the meeting calendar itself is fairly rigid and it usually stands as it's been declared without any changes. The daily schedule within a committee meeting can change. And in order to be aware of what's going on and in order to be able to give comments or information about our participation in sub-working groups, we usually need to have somebody in the committee meeting to be able to react, and that's Leo's role. By that, I think that it's time to give the voice to the man who actually sits there and works with it to explain what are we doing at IMO at the moment and how we are going to work in the future. Leo, please go ahead.
Well, thank you, thank you, Eero. And thank you very much for this great introduction, which makes my job in going further with this presentation definitely easier. And good afternoon again to everyone that is joining today, or good morning, or good evening, depending on where you are. But maybe just a short overview before getting into the part of how does Cimac fit in the framework of the IMO. I think it is usual, also, it is useful also to look at the broader context where the maritime sector is operating in today. So the maritime sector is changing fast. Regulatory requirements are evolving. Environmental targets are becoming more ambitious, as we have seen. This is one of the topics that is very much on the agenda of IMO. We are all aware of that there is on the table the net zero framework. New fuels and technologies are moving from discussion into implementation. And digitalization, of course, is one of the big topic, is affecting how ships are designed, built, and operated. But at the same time, expectations around safety, security, and transparency continue to increase. And it is in this context that many of the decisions that will shape and are shaping how our industry operates in the coming years, but also right now, are indeed taken at the International Maritime Organization. And this is why also we wanted to organize this town hall today to give you a broader picture of how the IMO works, but also how Cimac and how do we fit in the overall framework. So Eero has already given a very good overview of what it is, the IMO, what are the main committees, how it is structured. And I will start here with an overview of what has been our activities in 2025. As has already been said, we have gained consultative status as an NGO in 2024. So in the second half, and it is basically from that moment that we have been present in London. But we have intensified our activity, our presence, starting from 2025. It has been, of course, for us also a year of learning, being there actively present, but being there also as an observer, meaning observing how the organization functions, how are the processes, its processes structured, and how are the internal procedure going on. So it has been an important year of us to get acquainted with the organization to be able to deliver as best as you can with our expertise and knowledge. In 2025, as you can see, as you can see from this slide, we have followed in total seven subcommittees or committee meetings. When it comes to, let's say, what Eero has already mentioned, the most important ones, so the main committees, we have been there for the MSC, for the Maritime Security Committee, for the MEPC, which is the one that deals with environmental protection, and is the one also that is in charge of discussing and diving into the net zero framework. As well as when it comes to committee, we followed the facilitation committee, which is the one that focuses actually on the facilitation of ship operations by streamlining administrative reporting, but also a very important point for us, digitalization-related procedures. While the subcommittees that we have attended, one has been already mentioned, which is the Ship Design and Construction Subcommittee Meeting. But we were there also for the Ship Systems and Equipment, the SEC meeting, and as well for the Human Element Training and Watchkeeping Subcommittee, which is the HTW. But our engagement at the IMO is not limited to the main committee meetings. And the meeting of the committee is basically called the plenary meeting. But we are present, when we are there, also in other bodies that are being established in parallel, for example, to the committee meetings, which are the places actually where technical discussion and more detailed work is being done. And in particular, here I refer to the working group, expert groups, and drafting groups that are being established in parallel with committee meetings and that dive more deeper into more technical details of particular issues. To give you, and just an example, for instance, the SDC committee, Subcommittee Meeting took place last week. We have been in London with quite a strong and large delegations. So we have had, at the same time, the committee meeting going on and in parallel, several expert and working groups, where in this case, Cimac has been particularly active in the expert group on the reduction of underwater radiated noise that has been established. So just to say that in parallel to the committee meetings, there are other meetings that are going on. In addition to that, in 2025, we have also followed three intercessional working groups, which are the groups that goes on and that work on particular issues from one committee meeting to the other. And as well as we have participated in two correspondence groups, those are the groups that work fully remotely and on particular topics that has been assigned to the committee, that needs to be further, topics that need to be further developed. And lastly, which I wanted to mention here, is that being at IMO gives us also access to participate in dedicated technical workshops and seminars, again, on relevant and particular topics. We have been present also in such events in London. And just as a heads up, if there is someone of you that are interested in participating in the next one, the next one is taking place on the 12th of February, and it will focus on the topic of marine biofuels. Moving forward, something I have already anticipated. But here in this slide, we have tried to visually present and put together the topics that we deal with at the IMO so far, given, first of all, our capacities. So what can we actually do? Because as you have seen, there are many meetings, many committees, many topics, and it's difficult to follow all, of course. And as Eero has already said, the topics that we decide to engage with at the IMO are coming, the interest is coming from our working and the strategy groups. So our membership is actually pointing us where we should engage and where should we be present at the IMO. So first of all, you see on the list, the topic of underwater radiated noise, this I have already mentioned, is something that we are very active at and also something that comes at the right moment. We have established in Cimac a working group, Working Group 22, that is dedicated to this topic. And at the same time, this is now, the radiated noise is something that is taking ground at the IMO. We are working on an action plan, on guidelines. So we are preparing for future regulations. And actually, Cimac is present there from the beginning, and we can contribute with our knowledge and expertise. And this is basically one of our objective at the IMO, to be there and to help the decision-making by providing technical and technical input and expertise from our members. Then we have already, we have also dealt with training guidelines for alternative fuels. You know that this is a topic that is now very hot. It's something that is very high, very high on the priority of the IMO. And here, we have established also a cooperation with the Global Industry Alliance, which operates directly under the IMO. And together, we are actually developing training courses for seafarers, but for everybody that needs to be on board on vessels, high-level content, where they can actually get acquainted with these new technologies and how to deal with them onboard of ships. I can maybe already now give a bit of an additional information that we have started to develop the one on methanol and that we hope to have it released, so to have it publicly available by the end of March, beginning of April. So this is the current plan, and then others will follow. Probably the next one would be the one on biofuels. Moving forward, other topics that are of particular interest for us and where we think as a community, as Cimac community, we can contribute very much to the IMO is first of all, the topic of digitalization. We have also a dedicated strategy group within Cimac that deals with this topic. It is a topic also at the IMO that is spread now across several committees and subcommittees as the importance is very obvious. With this, it goes hand in hand also the MESS, the Maritime Autonomous Surface Ships. This is also something that we are looking at. At the end of my presentation, I will just announce that we will have also dedicated town hall to this topic. And then cybersecurity and data harmonization, this is something that we are also active in and we are following at the IMO. And last on the list, last on the list is the onboard carbon capture and storage. This is somewhere, something that we have started to dig in, but we still have to see within our membership how to go further with this item. But overall, and once again, just to stress, that the topic that we are bringing forward and that we engage in comes directly from the interest of our internal membership of our internal working groups. So this is a kind of presentation in bullet points of what our membership at the IMO gives access consequently to our members, so to the members of Cimac. So first of all, being at the IMO as an NGO, it means that for our members, there is a possibility to participate and to be part of the delegation, the Cimac delegation that attends IMO meetings, so committee, subcommittee meetings. But as I have anticipated before, the work doesn't stop only there or is not limited to the committee, subcommittee meetings. But our experts participate also in working groups, expert group, and drafting groups, those working bodies that are being established and that go deeper into technical details. Here, of course, we find also the correspondents and their intercessional working groups. So being present and being active in all these bodies, of course, we are able to contribute to the IMO decision-making from our technical point of view and with our knowledge. I have mentioned before that there are seminars and technical workshops that have been organized, so our members have access to that. I have said that the marine biofuels is the next one coming up. And then that's something that I find very, very important is the point of networking and collaboration. So we have used the year that is now behind us also as a year where we built our network, where we position ourselves at the IMO. We know that we are not alone there, that there are 177 member states, there are other NGOs, that there are other IGOs, and that actually, if we want to bring something forward to the IMO and if we want that what we put on the table has the chance to be adopted and discussed, that we need, of course, the support of other stakeholders there. So from the very beginning, it was clear that our objective at the IMO was not to compete, but it was rather to collaborate, to share our knowledge, and so to build a strong network with the stakeholders that are present there. But this consequently means also that our members, they have access to all these stakeholders that are present at the IMO and that are crucial for all the discussions that are going on. As we know, one, some of you have already had the chance to be at the IMO, that of course, a lot of work has been done in the formal settings of meetings, either committees or working groups, whatever. But also what goes on once the meeting are done in the cafeteria or in the corridors, this is also something quite important for the discussion. And last two points to our members, we prepared the briefing and debriefings before and after our attendance in London. And lastly, like today, we organize town hall, town hall meetings. We have created this online format where we inform our membership of the main outcomes, mostly after the main committee meetings. But as I said, we are going to have also specific topics that we will be presenting, like the one coming up on MESS. Now, to get a little bit more into our internal structure and how we have Now, to get a little bit more into our internal structure and how we have, how we have structured our work, our coordination between our position within CIMAC and how do we present that? How do we bring forward to the IMO? We have established also within CIMAC, the Regulatory Coordination Group. So the Regulatory Coordination Group basically coordinates and steers our decision making when we need to interface with regulatory bodies. That means that the technical input, whether it is a paper that we want to submit to the IMO or it is about a neural intervention, an intervention, the content is of course created and prepared in our relevant working groups. It can be working group on propulsion, can be working group on, on underwater radiated noise. So we have them on the different topics, as you know. But let's say that the final word of what is then being brought forward to the IMO lies with this coordination group. Because we want that something or a position that we, that we will represent at the IMO respect the interest of our collective membership. That means that of course, we trust that, that our working groups, they do everything as it should be. And then there is the content provided. But then as a last check, we have the Regulatory Coordination Group. This is that this is not in contrast with, for example, something that's being worked on or discussed in another working group. We have also clearly, a clearly defined workflow process, which I will mention in a minute, or how do we do that? And also guiding principles that actually governs our communication with regulatory bodies, in this case with the IMO. And last thing to mention here, in order for this group to be able to fulfill this, this task, we have representatives that have in-depth knowledge of, first of all, of CIMAC, of our working groups and strategy groups, of our vision and mission. But also members that have the big knowledge of how the IMO works, so they can help us also in supporting our work in London. As I have just mentioned, this is a little bit an overview of how our workflow process looks like. It means that it starts with the IMO coordinator, that will be, that is myself. So a little bit coordinating our activities towards the IMO spotting and seeing what is coming up on the agenda. And it might be of interest for our members, for our working groups and communicating this to our overall membership. And then it is our working groups and the strategy groups where the work actually happened. It is them who provide us with the technical content, with what needs to be taken to the IMO, which is then finally reviewed and approved by the Regulatory Coordination Group and ready to be presented to the IMO. So this is a simplified version of how our internal procedures work. And also for you to have actually an idea what's going behind the scene and how are we actually agreeing on something that we want to be presented at the IMO. Why am I saying that? Well, first of all, because when we interface with the IMO, where we are present in London, we represent our whole CIMAC community. That means that we do not represent individual interest, but our overall, our overall positions. And so that's why it is important that you always keep in mind that when we are there, we speak at CIMA. With a headline of our engagement, I would say at the IMO, is that we provide support and facilitation in the regulatory decision making process. How do we do so? So as I already said, we speak with one voice. So this is our unified representation. We try to always act and to always try to ensure that CIMAC is credible and it shows its integrity. In order to do so, we also align our position internally. We want to have an internal alignment. And that brings me to point four, which means that if we would have a position that is not shared by our membership or that goes against the interest or part to our membership, well, in that case, we wouldn't go forward with that position, at least for the moment. So we would put it a little bit on hold to see how we can sort it out and how we can reach an agreement, we create a position that is actually fine for everyone. Something that I have already mentioned is also that at the IMO, we focus on technical aspects of our discussions. Of course, if we participate and we are present also in political discussions, as you all know, and where, where that the net zero framework has been, this kind of discussion. But even then, we stick to our technical part of discussion without getting involved in the, let's say, really pure political, political stuff. We always try that all our contributions, whether we talk about a written submission, a document or oral comments or oral statement that we provide with, we provide the organization with quality contributions. We insist very much that we are there in the spirit of collaboration and the collaboration is supported. Again, we respect our internal priorities when we are in London. We have a clear scope that we stick to. And to finish, of course, but this goes without saying that we are at the IMO to share our knowledge and to engage technically into discussion and to be very transparent in what do we do there. So this is, this was a bit overall, our CIMAC engagement. I don't know whether before moving forward, Arrow, to the last part, whether you have some thoughts or something to say about what we have just presented.
Thank you, Leo. Not really. Very well put together. And, and just a reminder for everyone that this information is available from, most of it from our website. And this presentation is available if you want to have it. Please contact Leo or anyone in the sector. Maybe one of the key topics coming up is, is as Leo already said that we will have these town hall meetings. And we will every, in the beginning of every year, try to publish the schedule so that you will know what's happening throughout the year. And then maybe for Leo now to go a little bit on into the details of our activities this year. Please, Leo, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Arrow. And so coming to the last part of our presentation, this is, this will regard the future outlook, looking ahead and the CIMAC activities in 2026, at least that one that we have scheduled so far. So here you have our calendar, which is also publicly available on our webpage. And actually, what we have tried to do is to condensate into one page or in one calendar, all our activities. So if you go on our, on our, on our webpage, under events, you will find the section that is dedicated to the town hall and you can see this calendar. Here you can see, we have color coded so that we make distinctions between meetings. First of all, you have all IMO committees and subcommittees meetings showcased. So you can see all of them. And this is the lighter, this is the lighter blue. So also the one that we do not necessarily attend. But we have highlighted in darker blue, the one that we plan to attend this year, which is again, more or less it mirrors what we have done last year. So we have already been in London last week for the SDC meeting. We will likely be there for the HW, for the SSC, the FAL committee meeting. But also for the intersectional working group that deals with GTHG emissions and the one that probably everybody is looking to, the extraordinary meeting of the MIPC, the one that will resume the discussion on the net zero framework. And now we have a date for that. It will actually take place in November. And it is supposed to be together with the regular MIPC 85 and the extraordinary. So from the 16th to the 27th of November. Just as a side note, that this is scheduled for the moment, but will be formally confirmed at the MIPC 84, which is taking place in April. Here, Arrow has already mentioned, you can see how we have scheduled our, our town hall meetings in green. You have seen the one that are coming up, but I will have also a further slide with a clearer overview. You can see in this calendar also when the Regulatory Coordination Group meets and as well also other events around Europe where CIMAC will be present. Like we will organize an event at the Postidonia in Athens in June. We will be also participating in the SMF fair in Hamburg in September. So there is a lot of activities and we can try really to have here the most important one. But this calendar, of course, can be updated in the course of the year. Now going to what is coming up at the, at the IMO, what is coming up next? Several important topics are expected to feature prominently at the organization. And the one, the ones that we see that are particularly relevant to our overall community are the one that are displayed on this slide. But with, again, with a note that this is, some of them, it's not an exhaustive list. So of course, there are also other important things that are coming up. But maybe the one that are hot on the agenda is the IMO net zero framework. This has been now, let's say, all over the place. We constantly talk about it and we, everybody wants to know what will, what will happen with it. The discussion continues on Solas safety amendments. We will keep on working at the IMO as well on the MESS code for the moment, not mandatory, to create then the mandatory, which will follow up. We have discussed last week during the SDC about the nuclear code. So discussion continues also on that. The regulatory framework for alternative fuels and new technologies is also being discussed is something that is quite, quite central at the IMO agenda. And as well as the revised STC, STCW training standards, which I believe you're all aware of. And then I have said, there are many other topics that are coming up that we will cover. We cannot, of course, as I said, cover everything, but we try to really engage with everything that we have been asked for by our membership. And I will conclude today's presentation, at least from my side, from the moment, with the upcoming town halls. As I have said previously, we organize town halls after the main committee meetings to give a briefing, to give detailed information about what has been going on during these meetings, what are the main outcomes, what does it mean for our CIMA community. But also it is the moment where you can ask questions, where you can bring up topics that are important to you and that you can flag us what we should do or where we could improve our presence there. So you see that from the first of April, we start with the FAL, moving on with the other, with the other committee briefing or debriefing after the, after the meetings took place. And just the last information we will have this year, probably in March, also a town hall, a technical town hall that is dedicated to the topic of MESS. So and with that, I hope that this session, this session provide you with useful information about the overall IMO and CIMAC structure and our involvement there. And of course, I thank you very much for your attention and I give back the floor to Arrow for your conclusions.
Thank you very much, Leo. And for all of you, I hope that this gave some more insight on what's going on in CIMAC and what we are doing. I would still pose two questions to all of you where we would ask for your feedback. Is this method of communication, the town hall meetings that we're having, is this something that you feel that makes sense? This is a good way to, to, to inform our membership of what we're doing? And the second one is, is to ask you if there's any other topics that you would like us to take up, whether it has to do with IMO or the rest of the CIMAC work? We would be happy to get your input on that. And Leo, if I understood you correctly, this last slide, the schedules and the upcoming town hall meetings are available for everyone on our website, is that correct?
That's correct. Everything is published and available on our CIMAC website.
All right. Thank you very much. And I think that with that, thank you, Leo. And I thank all of you for attending. And we are looking forward to have your feedback. And as I said, the next town hall will be in March. And I hope to see most of you then there also. And with that, I close the meeting and I hope that you all have a very nice weekend. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Bye.